All right, there it is. Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the July 26, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Guyman City Council. And at this time, I'll ask Stacy Ross from the North Ridge Free Wheel Baptist Church to come up and give the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we love you today. You are great and awesome and worthy of our praise and worthy of our devotion. We thank you today for all that you have given, all that you've done. We pray that you'd bless this council, give them wisdom, help them make godly and wise decisions, help our city, Lord, to be able to be a good place, to be a place where, Lord, where we could prosper, we could grow, and do the things that you'd want done. Have your way in every decision that's made tonight. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Crone, would you lead us in the prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is the attendance roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Swager.
Here.
Crone.
Here.
Alvedres.
Here.
Livinggood.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Agenda item number three is public comments and announcements. Public comments and announcements. I think we have -- a gentleman from Gurnsey Engineering is going to talk to us for a second.
Well, good evening, council. In front of you, you should have a little pamphlet, I guess, to show a general outline of what we've been doing today. I've been up here most of the day with Doug. We've met with city staff, some of the technical advisory committee, which is the water sewer, some of the private utilities. And then our last meeting we had was with the stakeholder group. We've been talking about the downtown streetscape corridor project that we're kicking off. So, want to give you an update on what we've been doing and then what the next steps are going to be. We have a PowerPoint as well, so it's the exact same thing as what you have in front of you. On the second slide is our project team. It consists of three, a three-person or three-firm team. Gurnsey Engineering, we're out of Oklahoma City. We're engineers, architects, and consultants. We've done various comprehensive plans, streetscape studies, and that kind of thing. We also have Neeland Planning. They are, or she is, out of, it's a one-person firm. She's out of North Carolina. She's helped us on a couple of other projects and more, and McAllister Comprehensive Plans. And she's really good at looking at urban design and corridor studies. And then the third person we have, or firm, is BAU Boots are Architects and Urbanism. They are located in Oklahoma City, and they're really strong in architecture and urban design type projects. So, the next time you see us on the first visioning session, we'll have the entire team together, and we'll be up here doing that. On the next slide, it's just a little stat or quote about why you want to invest in downtown, rural downtowns. According to the National Main Street Center, every dollar invested generates $33 in return. So, I think it's really important to keep your downtown strong, especially in rural communities. On the next slide, there's a few questions, and some of these questions are what we asked the stakeholders today, just to get them thinking about what do they want the downtown to be, and looking beyond just the streetscape, looking at it as a corridor planning area. So, those are some of the questions that we're asking, and we'll continue to ask as we move forward. On the next slide, there's the planning process. This is basically our outline of how we're going to approach the project. Right now, we're in discovery, so we're trying to gather all the information we can. From there, we'll move into a visioning brainstorming session, go back to the office, develop a concept plan, some options. We'll put it together, come back, and let everybody look at it and see what we did right, what we did wrong, try to get the final concept together, and then, from there, develop phasing cost estimates, give you tangible things that you can take to apply for grants and move forward. On the next slide, the scope, basically, this outlines the six phases. These are in the scope that we submitted. It's in the contract. So, like I said, we're in phase one now, and then we'll work through these six phases going forward. On the next slide, it shows these phases outlined into a schedule. Right now, we're showing a six-month schedule. Talking with Doug, there may be a little bit of shifting on the timeline based on the, there's the TAP funding grant application that may be due potentially in November, so we may need to move a little bit different to accommodate that. But for right now, we're showing a six-month schedule with three workshops included in those. As far as, on the next slide, the public participation portion of it, you know, we want to make sure that we're hearing from the public, hearing from the stakeholders. So, these are just various things that we can do to try to capture that between community meetings or going to community events. We feel like that's a good way to capture people's input, is go to them and not expect them to come to a public meeting to do that. And then, finally, the project boundary, just a kind of refresher. On the, go to, I'll go to the next one. Essentially, it's one block east and west of Main Street from 12th down to South Second. So, again, not looking at just Main Street, looking beyond a block on either side. So, that's the study area. We've already flown aerial drone of that entire strip, so we have recent aerial images. And then we also have, they call it point cloud, essentially a 3D image of the area as well. So, the buildings are captured through that drone flight. So, it's pretty cool that we can utilize going forward in the process. And then, the last slide, these are some of the, on the group discussion, this was more for the stakeholder meeting. We talked a little bit about the goals, what are some of the expectations of the plan, perceptions, issues, and opportunities. So, it was an introductory piece, and then we're going to dig a lot deeper on the next time we're up here. And then the last slide is our team contacts. So, basically, this has all our email information for all the team members. So, I'll be the project manager, and so I'll be the point of contact. You can contact me anytime, but it also lists all the other team members' information as well. So, we're excited to be here, and we will be back in a month, month and a half to really get this thing going. So, thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. Any other public comments and announcements?
Good afternoon, and thank you. My name is Tracy Sims, and I'm actually here, take three minutes of your time, to introduce new company in the area. We have Sims Mobile Surface Preparation, which is really fancy sandblasting, which allows the city to get rid of graffiti, to clean up wood, brick, the streets if you were wanting to repaint, so you have a virgin surface in order to refinish or repaint and allow things to look better, be cleaner. Like I said, get rid of graffiti is one of the main things that we've helped cities with. Basically, I've got some information I'd like to give you guys, just so you have it. And if something comes up, we do free estimates. I will come over and visit with you guys one-on-one. We can work for the city itself or individuals. And like I said, less than three minutes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments and announcements? Any other public comments and announcements? Agenda item number four is approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a mo-
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second. I have a motion and a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number 835, and an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, of the code of ordinance of the City of Guyman, providing for severability and repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency. Staff report is enclosed, as well as a copy of the ordinance. I don't know if there's, Mr. Wagner, do you have any? The staff recommends it's-
This is, it was commercial, and they're wanting to go to a residential, which, and it has gone before the planning commission, and it was a unanimous vote, four to zero in favor.
That's correct. No, I'm sorry. I just, no, with the consultant with us, but yes, planning commission approved this. I actually have a slide presentation showing the lot and the comprehensive plan and all, if you would like us to go through that. I'll leave that up to your pleasure.
I'd like to see it personally.
That's essentially the presentation that we give to planning commission as well. So, yeah, if we could, Angela, have you go to the next one on here, just after that, the next one. So, just a quick subject, area map, if you know, right now, where the Hampton Inn is going in. This, I'm sorry, I'm walking away from the mic. This is that property that wraps around it, that was the phase of the Joyce Edition that we came in and platted about eight months ago with it. So, if we could go to the next one. So, I'll just step over and show you. The New Hampton is under construction right here, so we're talking about this chunk right back there. Next slide, please. Just a couple of quick slide, sight shots for you to see what's going on. It's construction. There's a lot going on out there right now. Next slide, please. Just to let you know, we can go to the next slide. Okay. So, when we look at our comprehensive plan, I've got both the previous land use plan and the current one for the comprehensive plan that is adopted. So, you're looking at this area right up here, very similar with the previous land use plan. What that color is, is that's looking for a medium-density residential. And so, the projects that are being proposed are for, to allow for apartments and all. But, so that medium density, it's higher, so that fits with the comprehensive plan, and like I said, also the previous comprehensive plan. And what's nice about this is it lets us use those apartments to then feather out as we go further into town to lower-density housing. So, it really is a very good approach for planning to deal with density feathering out to lighter density with that. Also, I might remind you, and it doesn't show up well on this, Angela, I might have another slide up there, I might not. I think that's the last one. Yeah, I'm sorry. I had one that essentially showed, and it's probably missing from this show. If you remember when we platted this with the Hampton Inn, that chunk out in front is, that street is actually being built all the way out. So, this residential will work with that. Now, understanding, we're just talking about zoning right now. We're not talking about the lot sizes, or the street layouts, or the easements and all. That will come when we go to preliminary platting, final. This is the first step that you need to take when you're looking at doing a development, is come and make sure you've got the zoning first. You don't spend a lot of money on engineering to plat. You get your zoning, and then you come back and deal with that. So, the applicant's taking the right approach with this, and really, it does fit well with how we envision the use of that with the comprehensive plan for the future of the city. That street network that's being developed in there will deal with the densities that we're looking at with here. That's why the land use plan shows it the way it does with it. Like I said, planning commission unanimously recommended approval, and staff also recommends approval on this. So, thank you. And, Mr. Wagner, I know you basically said the exact same thing, so, but thank you.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 835, amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Guyman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to declare an emergency?
I'd like to make a motion to close the emergency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Okay. Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action on resolution number 1808, resolution supporting the Main Street program in the City of Guyman, Oklahoma. Resolution is attached. We do this, I think, almost every year in support of Main Street. Any questions, motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 18-08, a resolution supporting the Main Street program in the City of Guyman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is presentation of monthly activities and the financial report by Main Street Guyman. Ms. Johnson.
Okay. What, that resolution is something that has to be in our annual agreement that goes to the Nash, or to the state, and it's not, it's not a true commitment to any specific thing other than support. So, yes, we do do that every year. Okay, our June month, we had two volunteers, Terry Brand and Erlene Schaefer, who attended the preservation conference in Tulsa for us this year. So, that was good. I applied for a farmer's market event grant that would be $1,500 on August 2nd. We will know. I have to go to Oklahoma City, and they'll question us, and we'll know. And if it is, we're going to do that to do the meet the markets, you know, the pickle contest, relish contest, and pep parade and stuff for the prizes and advertisement. Alved- Mitch, don't tell, okay? Promise?
It's on TV.
Okay. So, I wrote the nomination for Sarah for the National Health Center Week, Health Center Hero Award, and I'm not sure when that comes out, but that has been sent in, and also a nomination for Bob Berger with PCHC for the champion of the uninsured award, because they're doing just an exceptional job out there compared to the rest of the state or the nation. They're really doing a good job. So, I think they'll win. Farmer's Market did open. Now, Chet and I worked on a deal with Channel 7. They called in, they had seen the, on the Facebook, the veterans banners, you know, that the city has going down Main Street? And so, they called and came down and did a segment. And I, did you guys get to see it by any chance? It's on, it's on you, or it's on their website and stuff, but I looked at the man, the newscaster that did that, and he oftentimes gets 300 or 400 views on his segments. That one has gotten over 7,000 views. And we did it last week, right? So, that's unbelievable. A lot of people looking at that. So, kudos to the city for working with the American Legion on that. It's really, really, really great. I put that on my website, and we had 15 views that week, 15,000 views that week because of that segment, too. Not all it, but that was the main things. Not a whole lot else to talk about. Do you have any questions?
I think we're good.
Good? Thank you.
Agenda item number eight is presentation of the 2017 audit and performater by Crawford Associates and acceptance of the audit. Ms. Twiman.
Hi.
How are you tonight?
Do you all have copies of these?
No.
No.
No? Okay. Pass it down.
So, I'm going to make this really quick. I hope you've gotten a copy of your audit report, because that's what this is all about, is the audit report, right? So, this year, as always, you got a clean opinion on your audit report, which means that you can basically rely on the numbers that are in that booklet that you get every But what we like to do to kind of help you use those numbers that are in that book is develop this financial rating instrument that we call a performater. And it basically gives you a grade on your financial health and performance over the past year, so you can kind of see how you did. So, that's what I just passed out to you. And if you'll look on page five, this is the overall rating that the city received for 2017. And on a scale of one to 10, you are at a 5.1. So, if you were to think of that in terms of a school grade, that would be about like a C. You know, it's satisfactory, not poor, not, you know, super-duper A+, but satisfactory. Now, it did go down somewhat from the previous year, and the reason for that primarily was a continuing decline in cash. So, the quick ratio and the current ratio, those two in particular went down from last year because of that decline in cash. One thing I want to point out on page 18 is the sales tax. While we still saw a decrease in our sales tax, it wasn't as great of a decrease as it was percentage-wise in the previous year. So, maybe that's coming back up for 2018. I think we're doing a little bit better in that area. And then, one other thing I want to mention, since I just now talked to Chris Gander, is that the city has available to it all of its general obligation legal debt limit available to issue GO bonds. So, that, for the City of Guyman, you have always received the highest rating you can get because you're not bumping up against that legal limit to issue GO debt. So, that's a positive thing for the City of Guyman, that you can, if you so desire, issue some GO bond debt. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take those. We're always available by phone or email as well.
Does a lot of this go back to our 2016 audit that we found out on the budget that we actually didn't have as much as we-
Some of it does. Some of it does. Our expenses are still, you know, eating into that cash. Yeah. Yeah.
Would, I'm sure we've also saw tremendous decline in gas revenues this last two years, haven't we? On our utilities, on gas revenues, they've been off because of the mild winters?
It, that's, that has been the case as well. Now, we did raise some rates to kind of, you know, help in the utility area, but I don't know that we raised-
No, we didn't touch-
Gas rates.
We didn't touch gas.
Yeah. So, yeah, the mild winters did kind of hurt us, too.
Okay. Any other questions? I think you're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine is discussion regarding GO, general obligation bonds for proposed street improvement projects by Bill Strecker with Bank of Oklahoma. And he brought some help along, assisting, I know.
We are a public finance firm. Bank of Oklahoma is owned by what they call BOK Financial, and within BOK Financial, there's another company called BOK Financial Securities that Chris Gander and I work for. And we're starting to see a lot more cities look into issuing general obligation bonds. And so, after talking to your mayor and city manager, we said, why don't we come up and just have a short discussion on what exactly is a GO bond, how does it work, and kind of get a little bit more familiar with this. We do this for several cities around the state. The last one that was, Chris did one in Lawton. It was a total of 55 million, and he just closed 11 million of it this week. So, I'm going to introduce Chris now, and he's going to give you the GO bond 101 education.
All right. I'll try to keep it brief and not get in the weeds too much, but thanks for having us. What you have in front of you is that's really the numbers. So, if you like the numbers and the graphs, it's the good stuff. If you don't, it's the boring stuff. So, I'm just going to talk on a real high level, the way GO bonds work, and back even further. With the city, you've got three ways to fund things, and it's going to be sales tax, utility system revenues, or GOs. A lot of times, cities don't necessarily use the GO aspect. You cannot, you can't use GOs for operations. It's only for projects, and the projects have to be fairly specific. The interesting thing about a general obligation bond is, unlike a sales tax, you're kind of choosing a revenue stream, and that revenue stream goes for so long, whereas with a GO bond, you authorize a set dollar amount, and then that drives what the tax rate is. So, that's opposite to what you're used to with a sales tax. You're going to set a tax rate at half a cent or one penny, and then whatever that generates comes in, and then you borrow what you can based on that revenue stream. This is the opposite. You get authorized for a flat dollar amount, and then we go issue the debt, and as those payments come in, we divide that among all the citizens, and they pay their prorata share of that, and that drives the tax rate. Because of that, there's a lot of kind of planning in advance to say, okay, where are those tax rates going to land? We've got to kind of do the analysis of, you know, if we issue a bond, they're here this year, next year, what amount, what will happen to the tax rate? So, that's what this book is in front of you. On a real high level, there's a couple, couple things as it relates to state statutes that are odd, and they vary from state to state. But in Oklahoma, the, one of the key things is you have to have level principal payments. So, if you have to buy a car, you get a mortgage, your payment's going to be $1,000 a month. And that first, that first payment, you're going to pay $900 in interest and $100 in principal. And by the end, when you're almost paying off your house, what you're doing is paying 900 in principal and 100 in interest. It's flip-flopped. Well, by the way, our statute's requirement, you're basically having to make that $900 principal payment day one, and the $900 interest payment day one. But by the time you get to the end, you're still at the $900 principal and the 100 of interest. So, with that, there's a game of doing multiple bond issues to try to make the tax rate as level as possible. The nice thing about what projects you guys are talking about, the streets, is you don't need all the money at once. If you're doing a jail or a library, you have to have all the money on hand before you can bid the project out, whereas with streets, you can kind of do as pay as you go. So, in the analysis in front of you, I'm showing you issue bonds each year. So, what generally you do is you go out for an election for maybe, in this analysis, it's $10 million, and then you'd issue $2 million of bonds each year, five years in a row, and that helps manage that levy. So, once again, kind of the basics of this is, you know, 10 people want to build something, and the payment's 100, or $1,000, and so everybody pays their share. They pay $100, their 10th of the $1,000 payment, so everybody pays their $100, right? That works out great, and some guys will, wait a minute, you know, that, we're building this road to our houses, but your house is twice as big as mine, costs twice as much, so, you know, he should pay twice that amount. Or, one guy has 50% of all the property, and then five other guys have the other 50% divided. So, what happens is the guy that owns 50% pays 50% of the debt, and the five guys that have the other 10% each pay their 10%. All that to be said, is you get in this book, and we start talking about levies, and net assessed valuations, and exemptions. It's all back to the basics of, you're trying to do a project, and you're trying to have everybody pay for it on a fair, prorata basis. Does that make sense? So, with that, let's see if I skipped anything else. Have to go out for a vote, as I assume you all know. The process is, once, if you went out, and, what's going to, projects have to be specific. You also can't combine projects, so you couldn't say streets, and then try to add a library in there. If you want that, you've got to put a library as one proposition, streets on another proposition, a street sweeper as another proposition. a street sweeper as another proposition. You can't roll the street sweeper into the streets. They're very specific. And so voters can vote either one up or down. And so sometimes you'll, you know, have two pass and one fail, something like that. So with that, we're going to go into this presentation. Once again, stop me if you have any questions. And this is, once again, the city manager and the mayor just said, you know, if we want to do this, you know, we don't even have an idea of kind of what dollar we're talking about. So this isn't a, we're proposing this, or pitching this, or trying to sell you. This is just a, this is kind of where you guys would be, and this is what, if you issued this much, this is where your tax rates would land. If you guys directed us to go higher or lower, once we, now we have this set up, this is fairly easy to do. One other point is, school districts use GO bonds a lot. They also get operational levies, so a lot of the revenue, portion of the revenue to operate the school districts come from that. But if they want to build a new school, they would go out and do a GO bond election to pay for them. So with that, the first page is just the net assessed valuation. So you've got real property, personal property, and then public service, which would be your utilities and things. So a total of 61 million net assessed valuation. That's approximately a 10th of what your total value is. So the value of all of the property inside of the city limits would be $617 million. If you had everybody's house, every business, it's about $617 million. Jump to the next page. This is historic net assess. So basically, it's what you just saw, but we're looking back to 2000 and coming up to 2017. And you can see your growth rate to the right each year. So from 2000, 2001, you grew 1 point, the city, the value of the property in the city grew 1.32%. And you look all the way down. So at the very bottom, I've got the historic average, which you've grown 1.62% per year since the year 2000, which is probably not even staying up with inflation. You'd expect it to be somewhere at least equal to inflation. To the right, that's just a graphic representation of the same thing. Page four and five, you can skip. It's the details, if somebody wants to see the details. On page six, it's, this is a summarizing what you would see on page four and five, and this is saying, across the top, you have 2018, 19, 20. Those are the bond issues. And then going to the left, those are the years the taxes associated with those bonds would hit. So in 2018, you'd issue 2 million. 2019, 2 million. All the way out to '22, once again, 2 million every year. So you go to the far right, and we make adjustments. This is all per statute. Your levy, your estimated mills, starts at 5.53, goes up to about 21, and then starts decreasing as all these bonds pay off. And once again, your payments are, start high, and then they start going lower. So once, I would assume that this is all gibberish still at this point. Jump to the next page. Kind of a summary, and this is actually generally means something because we have a historic, you can see where your levy has been. But since you've never done any GO debts, we don't have any historic levy. But what I do have is an average down towards the bottom of 12.88. So basically, I'm saying, if you average, if you do what we showed on the previous page, and you average what the levy is over approximately 15 years, your average levy would be about 12.88. Once again, to the right, it's a graphical representation. So then you flip to the last page, and this is always the one that people are most curious Start in 2000, once again, we kind of historical information. The school district was at 47.04 mills. City of Guyman is at zero. The county's 15.6. So the total mills, total levy was 62.64. So 62.64 mills on a $50,000 house, if you go to the right, was $313. You guys following me right here? So here's the mills, your total mills right here. So on a $50,000 house, property taxes were $313.20. On a $100,000 house, it was $626. So, and if you had a $200,000 house, you could double that. Come down to the bottom, really, nothing's changed. I mean, actually, your mill levy's a little bit less. The school districts come down, so you're at 40.99. City's at zero. County's at 16. So you're 57.01. And you can see what the taxes are on all these different values of homes. So you jump down below there, I'm saying, if you implemented what we showed on the previous pages, did $2 million a year, every year for five years, you would add the 12.88 mills to what you have right now. So you'd go from 57.01 to 69.89. And I think the key part here is, when we're saying, hey, you're going from zero to 12, you're actually not going from zero to 12. You're going from 57 to 68.89. Because the people aren't, it's not just the cities, you're paying these other jurisdictions. So look at a $100,000 house, and that's why I have it down here. Basically, you're paying 57.10 now, 57, sorry, $570.10. And if you implemented this plan, the tax rate on that house now would be 68, 69.89. So the tax would be $698. So you'd be going from 570 on a $100,000 house to 698. So call it $130.
That's the highest it'll be?
That's the average.
That's the average.
Yeah. You know, I could do this where I showed every year, but it gets, I mean, it's already enough numbers on one page. But, good question, that's just the average. It would be higher in some years and be lower in others. So the key question, you know, when you're trying to decide this, if this is the route you want to go or not go, I mean, it's always, you know, because the voters are going to have to prove it. I mean, it's not, you guys don't really decide whether you're going to do this or not. You're deciding whether you're going to let the voters decide whether they want to put the tax on themselves to pay for the project, and whether they like the project enough to make that payment.
Did BOK do Oklahoma City's like 950,000 last, 950 million?
We're not the City of Oklahoma.
950 million.
Billion, yeah, it's like almost a billion. So, so a couple things on that. So first answer, to answer your question directly, where, the way these work is, you have a financial advisor. That basically, you have to sell GO bonds at a competitive sale. You don't hire an underwriter. So you hire an FA, and then they put out a packet, and then people bid at a certain date and time, and whoever has the low interest rate gets awarded the bond. So we bid on those, their bonds, because we serve as an underwriter sometimes, and sometimes we serve, we can't do both with any one entity. So we're financial advisors to Edmund, Moore, Lawton, Woodward, Weatherford, all over the state, but especially around the Oklahoma City Metroplex, Oklahoma City schools.
Like an RFQ, you guys would request, like, we would do an RFQ.
Yeah. So basically, you do, you basically send out a packet, yeah, and then you wait for a sit. So specifically, in Oklahoma City, we would rather buy those bonds than act as our financial advisor. So the other key points I was going to say is, it's interesting, because you guys don't necessarily have a basis, because you don't look at property taxes all the time. But any of the cities around the metropolitan area, you're approaching 130 mills. I mean, you guys are at least half of what those, I mean, because generally, I mean, it's not just the city, though. I mean, the school district, because that, that 40 mills that they have, that's all operational, which means they don't really have any bonds outstanding right now. That's just their operational mill. So that's as low as it could basically be. The county, that's just their operational mill. The city doesn't have one. Sometimes you have a VOTAC that's on top of this. So anyway, 130 is not an unreasonable number to see in the metropolitan area. In Oklahoma City Metroplex, you've got the county, that can sometimes go out for general obligation debt, you've got the city. So 57, that may be actually the lowest mill levy I've seen in, as a community as a whole. So, and it's, it's different. I mean, a couple stories, and I said I was going to be brief, so I'll be quiet after this. But there's an interesting, Nichols Hills is one of our clients, has been for decades. But Nichols Hills is an affluent community, and you think everything's rosy there, but they have zero sales tax base. It's a complete residential area. So while you guys, you think about that, because they're boxed in with May and Penn, and it's just a couple square miles, and it's all houses. They've got one little shopping center. All the other shopping centers around them are City of Oklahoma City. So, I mean, they're, everything was falling apart, their streets, their sidewalks. And so at some point, once again, you only have three revenue streams for a city. And so they're like, we're just going to have to tax ourselves. So a long time ago, they decided to, the only way they're going to be able to do it is through GO debt. And so they started doing an election about every five years, kind of ish, doing the bonds like laid out here, and their mill's about 30. But, I mean, they've gotten used to it, and once again, it's like, they didn't have a choice.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, backed into a corner. They had to pay for their infrastructure, and it's either raise utility rates, sky high, and that was it. Because the one of the legs, which once again would be the sales tax, they didn't have an option. They could have raised sales tax to the ninth degree, and they still would have never gotten any revenue enough to pay for their streets and sidewalks. So it's just a tool. Sometimes it's right, sometimes it's not. And that's for you and your citizens to decide. Happy to answer questions. If you guys talk about this later and want this rerun, look at it a different way. Like I said, it's set up, so we're happy to.
Chris, this is a simple majority.
Yes.
The vote of the people is a simple majority.
School districts are 60%, but a simple majority for almost anything you all would want to do.
Is there a percentage of the dedicated funds? Is it 85%, 80% that has to be dedicated with other projects that can be added?
It's, it's pretty, so if you're doing streets, it's, and this will get your bond attorney involved, but about 60% I think is the number. And, but then it's not like you can go use that other 40% for what you want. You basically have to say, we're going to do Main Street from first to sixth, and dedicate 60% based on that. Then if it costs more than you expect, you have that extra 40% to get it done. If it comes in low, or it comes in right where you expect, that other 40% still has to be spent on streets. Can't go spend on something else. It's still only to be used for the streets. So yes, and, but it's still pretty specific even, even after you've done your 60%.
Like a 520%. Any other questions?
I was just going to say, it looks like, like a $100,000 home, you're looking at approximately maybe $10 a month more.
That's right. On a, once again, on average, I was trying to keep it, on average, it'd be.
About 200,000 would be about 20.
Yep.
Figure of percentages.
Assessed, not what you paid for your home.
Right.
Okay. And that's appreciated. Any other questions? Chris, thank you, and Bill.
Yeah.
Sorry you've got to ride home with him.
Well, there's always a draw. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action on approval of the VIVE request to close the Guyman business office. A letter, I think, is attached again. And I think we have a couple gentlemen from VIVE here, if you'd like to address us, or if you'd like to answer questions, I guess.
Honorable mayor, members of council, city manager, thank you for considering our request to close just the, the front part of the office to the walk-in traffic. This is Dave Harwood. He's the vice president of operations for VIVE, which covers all of the area. And we're here to answer any questions you may have as far as this is concerned.
Have you talked to any of your customers in CLA, Phil?
We're not closing the office, so this would be just closing the, the front counter.
Right.
The, the, the volume of traffic has kind of been reducing over the course of the last several years, and it's continued to reduce. There's several other payment options. People exercise, they go to Walmart, they can, you know, they could do auto pay and things like that. So we did, we have not surveyed the customers, but, you know, just based on the traffic reduction, I just want to comment too, that overall, our employment here has gone up because we have brought on a new technical operations manager. We just brought on a new field technician that just relocated from the Oklahoma City area too. So, so we are investing heavily in Guyman. It's just that this one function, due to the reduced traffic, we'd like just to close that part.
Do you have any numbers of how it's decreased?
I can, I can present that, yes. I can provide that to the city. I don't have it with me.
I know there's, you know, there's some days that there's, there's just, there's no traffic at all. People pay their bills differently nowadays. They all get an envelope, you know, with their, with their statement. They can pay by phone, have their bank make the payments for them directly. It's just, you know, it's just, just a change, that's all.
How's maintenance on your polls?
Very good. So with the initial, the initial quantity that we worked out with the city, we broke that up into two phases, ended up being 200 polls. We completed those 200 polls, and we just completed phase two toward the beginning of this year. We're continuing on, and, you know, we're continuing to replace polls. And year-to-date, I think we've done an additional 37 polls. I should also note, just in that same period of time, we've replaced miles of distribution network as well, and installed new distribution network. And we're currently in the process of installing enhanced electronic equipment at our head end location that'll enable us to launch 300 make service throughout Guyman.
Any other questions?
So obviously, we would request that you approve the closure. It's strictly economics.
Whatever you'd like to do. But I guess, but for your customers, if they want to sign up for your service, they can do it online, or by telephone, or if they have problems?
Yes. That way, and, and there's, all of our technicians will still be working out of here, so if people have equipment or something that they want to turn in, our guys will go by and pick it up, just make an appointment with them, go by and pick it up. Or, you know, we'll send them a prepaid box. They just put it in there and mail it back to us. We've got all the avenues covered for the customer. So we just don't see any hindrance at all by discontinuing the walk-in at all.
Well, a possibility of new customers, how you've got them covered?
Well, they can do the same phone, they can look us up, I mean, look us up on the internet. That's how, that's how everybody does it anyway.
The majority of newcomers, customers will call us over promotional materials, and they'll call our, our sales center.
Because we continue to send out promotional materials to all the non-subscriber homes all the time. So they'll have a number, they'll be able to contact us for any reason.
Yep. And just to reemphasize, I mean, Guyman remains our kind of a regional operations center here. So over the, you know, western Kansas, Texas Panhandle, this is our regional operations center. So most of our technicians reside in Guyman, and are dispatched to western Kansas, to the Texas Panhandle from this location.
And our new manager just told me that he just bought a house here in your town, so he's going to be a resident.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Wagner?
No, but I do have a question for you gentlemen. If you are anticipating closing an office in Guyman, do you have other towns and areas that have business offices? And have you closed there as well?
In this region? Perrington?
Yeah, Perrington. Most, it's, it's most of the, you know, smaller communities where it just doesn't justify it, and it has not caused a problem. As a matter of fact, I was just in Perrington this morning, visiting with the city manager. And... As a matter of fact, I was just in Perrington this morning visiting the city manager and it's not a problem.
I'll make a motion that we approve the VIVE request to close the Guyman business office.
Second.
Have a motion in second.
Who seconded?
Sean.
Crone?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Epstein.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Nay.
Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, let's see. Agenda item number eleven is discussion and possible action on approval of month-to-month extension of the current professional service agreement between the City of Guyman and Larry Mitchell with M2 Municipal Solutions LLC. This is a continuation of our consulting agreement with Mr. Larry Mitchell.
Correct. On a month-to-month basis from here on out, finish up some more projects that we've kind of had some hiccups, not hiccups, but other things that have occurred which have slowed us down, I guess I should say.
Okay. Questions, discussion?
Are we looking every other week still or one week a month or have we discussed that?
Right, at this point, it's two weeks. But, it's also, I mean, we can modify if we need to depending on the, the projects at hand, whether that's here or if it's meetings elsewhere, we can revise as needed.
Okay.
This is at the same rate we initially approved, correct?
What the decrease is from when it started back in February and it has continually decreased over the last six months.
Do you have a number of projects that are left?
That I have Larry working on?
Yes, sir.
Five.
So, he has been a benefit to you?
He has.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion of approval of a month-to-month extension with, of the current professional services agreement between the City of Guyman and Larry Mitchell with M2 Municipal Solutions LLC. Second.
Have a motion in second.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye. Agenda item number twelve, discussion and possible action to approve invoice number fifty-five oh-two in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to Western Enterprises Incorporated. The invoice is attached and was a beautiful, a beautiful fireworks. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve invoice number five-five oh-two in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to Western Enterprises. Second.
Have a motion in second.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Agenda item number thirteen is discussion and possible action on approval of invoice number four-two-one-four to the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the two thousand eighteen Pioneer Days rodeo scholarship. Invoice is attached. And if...
Do you have any questions, sir? I was gonna make Mitch come up here, but he's sitting back there acting like he's scared.
Well, it would probably be appropriate to let you give the, the report of how successful you were this year.
Well, we did have a really successful year. I think when we end, we always have this conversation of actual budget that's reported and, and forecasted budget. I work a lot off forecasted. I found you guys and her work on actual of the month behind. So, that's kind of been a, because I see numbers in the paper. But, we're gonna be about eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty roughly profitable this year. We're hoping to do some things next year. It was a really great year.
How's that different from last year? How's that different?
Last year, we were sixteen thousand in the hole with probably ten thousand dollars' worth of invoices unpaid. This year, we were able to pay those invoices plus profit eighteen thousand seven hundred.
Thank you.
So, we made a lot of little changes, just kind of cleaned house, nothing major. Just good housekeeping, good budgeting. One thing that we're doing too this year is we're rebidding. Pete Carr will not be back next year. That bid is going to frontier. They've been Stock Contractor of the Year for the last four years. They come in, actually, at the end of the day, they're gonna be cheaper. Pete had a clause in there that he raised X percent every year based on some different things. This time, we're bidding at three years for a solid bid of a solid amount. So, there won't be a raise in there or anything like that. One of the things also that we've done is we have taken back over providing the clown act, the, just all the stuff, the timed event cattle. We're getting some of that donated from some local cattlemen, different things like that that are helping to cut some costs in the rodeo too. So, it was a pretty, pretty good deal. We're hoping to build some money, start building a pod in there and be able to do some things further in the future. It was a good year. Any questions?
You answered mine.
Okay, I'm ready. Throw it at me.
You need another clown?
Good barrel man. How quick are you, Kim?
He couldn't have timed that much better.
His eyesight...
He can pay me later.
I know you used to be really nimble, but I'm thinking...
His eyesight's way better, so he's a little quicker.
Yeah, I'm getting old and slow. Or slow anyway.
So, no. One thing too, I, and I'm not sure if this is the right forum, I'm not real politically correct usually. So, we want to change the convention and tourism money. So, there was a clause wrote twenty years ago about how that money's spent. That needs to be reevaluated in a really major way. If you think about what's changed in the last twenty years, Kim, show us your iPhone, right? We all have them. You look at them, you're getting calls. The way that's wrote, it's structured for old-school advertising and we've completely changed the day and age with push notifications and I'm gonna talk way above my head. I just, I have a six-year-old, so I kind of get it. But, on Snapchat, Twitter, Facebook, there's a lot of pushes and things that we could be doing out. But, the way we've locked in the dollars that need to be spent, that we're not really utilizing that money to help convention and tourism, I feel like, or to help our rodeo. I don't think the advertising structure that we were given with them fits today's day and age. You know, twenty years ago, it did, absolutely, papers and all those things. But, now I think we need to be able to take advantage of a lot more different type of advertising that's out there. So, one thing I'd like to talk to somebody at any point, I'm happy to go anywhere, is can we change that structure, you know, when you guys give us that money, but how that money's spent? Advertising's a great way to spend it, don't have an argument with that. The complaint is the way that it was wrote that we have to spend it. And I think you guys can all understand that. So...
Definitely.
Mr. Mitchell, aren't you in the process of rewriting some of those guidelines, so?
I have, and I have given it to the Convention and Tourism Board for review. So, if any time Mitch, you'd like to talk to me about it.
Yeah.
Come see me.
I'll do it.
Okay. Back to the subject.
Yes. I'll make a motion that we approve invoice number forty-two fourteen to the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of twenty K for the two thousand eighteen Pioneer Days rodeo sponsorship, item thirteen.
Second.
Have a motion in second.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mitch, thank you for the good job you did.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number fourteen is discussion and possible action on approving an equipment lease agreement between the City of Guyman and City National Bank and Trust for fifty new golf carts. The agreement is attached. This is a finance, financing agreement.
Right, from what y'all passed two weeks ago to go with the low bidder, which was City National Bank. This is just the agreement locked in too.
This is for five years? Is that four years? Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement between the City of Guyman and City Bank and Trust for the fifty new golf carts.
Second.
Have a motion in second.
Crone?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Epstein.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes and one abstain.
All right, any new business? Any new business? Not withstand adjournance, the Guyman City Councils will reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. Agenda item number two is approval of a consent agenda, which we've done. Agenda item number three, is there any new business? Agenda item number four, any reports from the city manager or council members?
I've got a few things. I wanted to thank Roger McKinnon this morning at the golf board. They accepted his resignation. He has been on the golf board for over forty years, so he, he's been a great asset for that for many, many years. And I just, I wish him the best. I think he, he's still gonna play golf is what he tells me, so he's just gonna have more time for it. And I've given y'all a list of different things. One of those is the process of where we are with the abatements we have been going through in the last two and a half months. It's an update and I can discuss with any of you in further detail as we go forward. But, it, it's there for y'all's viewing. Anything y'all have questions about, just let me know. I was also giving y'all the evaluations for the three months and we will be going through that probably the ninth of August as well. And one other thing is I was at CMAO last week. There's a lot of, I guess, talk around the state on where we are with the ABLE Commission and the laws going into effect October first. And I have talked to Mr. Petty, we're working through it because we will have to update our ordinance to reflect that since it comes in October first. And there's also the list of fees that have been there as well. If, in any habit stance, we can talk about that further in detail as well. But, we have three months, well, two months to talk about it. So, we'll be getting the ball rolling on that as well, working through it. Other than that, that's all I got.
That's it?
Thank you.
Anybody?
Well, looking over the performance review, it does look like starting the budget, we're gonna have to squeeze a little tighter again, much as we don't like to, but I think we're gonna have to.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Well, you know, anybody down that way? You don't wanna give us a, you don't wanna give us a, a show and tell on the California trip?
No U S...
Thirty hours at Disneyland in two days. My wife, she didn't wanna leave.
No U S C stuff, please.
Went to a Dodger game, went to the beach, got home safely, so...
Well, good, we're glad you, we're glad you survived and all three of the ladies did. On a positive note, I think we need to look at positives in our fine city. Next weekend is the, Panale State's belly open and they're going back, kind of drifting back to the format that they had years ago for Friday night is more of a dinner and a social hour and some things, some events out at Pickle Creek. And then they got the golf tournament and some other things. So, if you're a golfer or even if you're not, they'll put you on a team and they'll take your money and they'll put you with some people where you'll have a real good time. And so, that's a positive because, and also, if you haven't seen it, the turf project at Panale State University is going forward. I was over there last weekend and there's a lot of ditches and a lot of dirt, but they've got some poles sticking in the air that's gonna house the new teleprompter or the new video board or whatever. So, we're coming into the twenty-first century in the Panale, so good, good things happen. So, with that, anybody else have anything? If not, we'll stay into June and thank everybody for coming tonight.